Pleasure regions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order. Can I get a, a motion to approve the agenda tonight?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Um, approval to approve the open session minutes from August 26th of 2019.
Motion to approve the open session minutes of August 26th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and one more approval of the executive session minutes of August 26th, 2019. Uh, motion please.
Motion to approve the executive session minutes for August 26th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, moving on to community comments, do we have any community comments? So many lovely faces. No, seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's comments.
Alright, good evening, everybody. Um, first off, as I do every year, usually at the first meeting in September, just kind of go over to see exactly where we are with regard to enrollment so far this school year. Um, and keep in mind, things always change, our official enrollment numbers that determine funding and so on are technically October 1st enrollment, but this is where we stood as of last Friday. Um, so District 5, we're at 2,304 students and you see the breakdown as far as Clough Memorial, Misco, and Nipmuck. Realized during the budget development process for the FY '20 budget, our projections were at 2,300 exactly, so you can see, give or take, only four students. Um, the projections were pretty much right on the money. Um, so this represents a, a loss of 29 students, 29 fewer students than we had for our official October 1st enrollment last year. So really, by a factor of maybe a little bit more than 1% of our district, uh, we've gone down, so it is fairly stable. Um, our losses are at Misco and Nipmuck, and it's a pretty straightforward explanation. Um, if you were to look at the 5th grade class, um, the brand-new 5th grade class that came over from last year's 4th grade, it's 162. And we've been traditionally in the ballpark of around 200 students matriculating over, so that's a pretty dramatic drop-off. Uh, this year's freshman class, uh, at Nipmuck is 149, that's a little fewer, matriculating over from the 8th grade of last year, uh, from last year's 8th grade. Um, so, and I believe they were replaced by about 160 kids that graduated, uh, in the class of 2019. So, that really kind of, uh, those are the two key differences, both at Clough and Memorial, and particularly at Clough, we kind of maintained our kindergarten enrollment from the previous years, so you see, give or take, it's kind of status quo there. As far as enrollment by town, we've kind of maintained the pattern of where we've been, uh, with regard to overall, it's about a 55-45 split as far as, um, Upton to Mendon as far as the percentage of our kids. So obviously, that determines our local assessments moving forward. And right now, um, we've kind of maintained, we're about 10 fewer kids choicing in, and that's pretty much by design. Um, because as I've said in past meetings, we're, uh, pretty much getting up at the threshold with regard to, um, number of students choicing in and kind of reaching the law, diminishing returns, so to speak. Because keep in mind, it's only $5,500 per student. Uh, as far as our average class sizes, and these are the numbers in place, um, for the most part, pretty reasonable across the board. I know there's been some concerns at Clough with regard to our 4th grade, we've got three sections of 4th grade at 25 each, but overall, particularly in those early elementary grades, you can see they're very, very favorable. At Misco, uh, a little bit higher, um, but keep in mind that these are homeroom class sizes, they don't necessarily represent, uh, the, the sizes on the teams themselves. And I don't necessarily take into account situations where students might be in pull-out classes. And then at Nipmuck, again, across the board, if you look at average class sizes, again, uh, fairly reasonable, generally speaking, you see the business and tech tend to be a little bit on the higher side. They're very, very, uh, well-populated and well-enrolled. So that's essentially, uh, where we are right now with regard to enrollment, does anybody have any questions about that? Pretty straightforward. Uh, second thing that I wanted to keep you apprised of, and we did send out some correspondence, at least to our middle school and high school parents. Over the weekend is where we are with regard to Power School and migrating our SIS from I-Pass to Power School. Unfortunately, we've had some issues in, uh, the data transfer. Um, we seem to be in reasonably good shape with regard to, uh, current year data with the exception of some holes being present with regard to our contact information. Um, and some of it is the process of fields being named differently and having different definitions in I-Pass versus Power School. So we've, uh, been over the last, at least 72 to 96 hours, going through kind of a painstaking process of calling up all 2,304 kids and looking at that contact information. And that's why we put out the notice to, um, to all of our middle school and high school parents to give them the login credentials to go into the portal themselves, to check their contact information, and if necessary, uh, updating. Keep in mind, in order for our mass calling system, for our aptegy to work accurately, we need accurate contact information because that contact information is being pulled from Power School. So we're optimistic we can get this squared away. Um, as I put in background notes, there are also some outstanding issues ensuring that we have, uh, clean historical data with regard to, uh, courses that students took, particularly at the high school level, and also their transcript information. However, realize we are, we still are simultaneously running I-Pass, um, but we are confident that some of these data translation issues, we will have rectified within the next week or so, and I'll keep you apprised, okay? So the third thing for your informational purposes that I'd like to discuss with you tonight is the issue that's received, um, some attention, not a lot of attention in my humble opinion in the local media. And it's the issue of a proposed charter school, um, application, it's actually a prospectus that's before, uh, the Department of Education right now, and it was submitted during the summer months. Right now, we're in an early stage, and I'll, I'll discuss, um, some of the timeline, uh, a little bit more in a few minutes. But something that we don't speak much about, particularly during the budget process, is the whole idea of, um, how many of our students in Mendon and Upton attend charter schools? And what is the, the funding mechanism, and what does it look like as far as the breakdown? So at present time, relative to other communities, we don't have a great deal of number of, uh, K through 12 students accessing charter schools. Right now, it's a grand total of seven in this current year. And the way the funding mechanism works is based upon the relative wealth of the community is what the payment is, uh, per student. So you can see, we have, um, three students attending the Advanced Math and Science Academy in Marlboro, and we have four students attending the Benjamin Franklin Classical Charter School in Franklin. And you can see the set rates per student, and therefore, if you look at that column, "payment," you see the breakdowns. So it's essentially, uh, a payment to the district of $106,804. And the interesting thing about the reimbursement rate by statute, uh, the reimbursement rate is supposed to be 100% of the per pupil rate in the first year of attendance, and then the next five years, it's 25%. However, as we're kind of painfully aware, vis-a-vis something like, uh, regional, uh, transportation reimbursement, the state doesn't necessarily always deliver on its promise of reimbursement rates, right? Hence, we've been stuck 58, 59, 65%. So actually, charter school reimbursement is in the same million, okay? And if you were to look over the last five fiscal years, uh, 2015 to the current, it's actually less than 2/3 than the amount that they've promised. So if you look at the reimbursement rate that we're receiving on our seven students, uh, it's actually less than 15% overall. So you can see, the total cost to M-U-R-S-D, um, this current fiscal year is a little bit more than $92,000. Now keep in mind, this is something that we don't speak a great deal about, you know, on a $36 million budget, you know, through the process. But it's always in the revenue line as far as charter school reimbursement, or, you know, net charter, I think is what Jay refers to it, as far as how much money is going out and how much are we actually getting in. So kind of the net-net is, you can see, the overall reimbursement is relatively low. So I bring this up, um, over a potential threat of this proposed school, and I believe I put in the background notes a actual link to the completed, uh, prospectus. And the vision of this school, which is entitled the Leading Edge Charter School, would be a proposed K through 8 charter school to be opening a year from now. Uh, initially with a grand total of 210 students, and then to build over the next three years to a total population of 270. And the vision is that it would pull from nine different communities, Mendon and Upton being, uh, a couple of them, but being proposed to be situated in Milford. It would be Milford, like I said, us, Hope Dale, uh, Midway, Bellingham, Blackstone, Millville, and Uxbridge. So seven school districts in nine different communities. I think a, a caveat, and I'd like to show you this, based upon these numbers, these are actual real numbers, but estimating conservatively, um, of a per pupil rate, and I went with 16,000. What would a potential, uh, hit to the district be? So keep in mind, 270 students in total, and as the process works, it would be based upon a blind lottery system. So there's no guarantee proportionally of how students would be drawn to the school, um, based upon student population or anything like that. So I put five different scenarios, just for the sake of argument with regard to, um, 10, 20, 30, 40, or 50 students, assuming a rate of 16,000 per student, what the total payment would be. Again, another assumption, uh, but going with a 15% de facto reimbursement rate. And you can see what the implications would be, uh, as far as a total cost. And you know as well as I know, uh, in the event of, say, just 20 students being, um, taken by this charter school, a hit of $272,000 would be significant. If you recall of our meeting of June 3rd of this year, when we had to close a gap of 303,000, what that meant with regard to layoffs. So it's something that, uh, again, uh, it would be a significant financial hit. However, um, as I say in the background notes, um, I think that that is a key, key argument, uh, against this application going forward. Uh, however, I think in, in, in speaking to the decision-makers, i.e. at this juncture, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, I don't think it's the key argument, I really don't. For the simple reason that of the nine drawing communities, eight of us, the only exception being Milford, are considered to be hold harmless communities. We're all communities that are getting that bare minimum of $30 per student and additional aid. So I think from a financial perspective, a case could be very easily made, saying, well, you're already getting more in state aid than you're supposed to be getting with regard to the funding formula anyway. Um, so obviously, that whole piece is problematic. However, keep in mind that one of the largest elements of the idea behind charter schools is the issue of choice. So, uh, I've had the opportunity to meet with the other six superintendents that have been involved, my apologies, uh, my colleagues in Blackstone, Millville, and at Uxbridge, um, have it filled in the numbers. I can assure you, both of them, unfortunately, are probably going to be a little on the high side for choosing out, but all nine communities that would be, uh, affected by this charter school are very much choice communities. And you can see by the number of kids both migrating in and migrating out, we're talking upwards of easily 1,000 students having that latitude for other public school options, okay? So I think that's a key factor, and trust me, there's many, many other considerations here. Um, however, I think the most compelling reason, uh, for opposition to this charter is essentially, uh, what I put in the background notes. I hope you all have the opportunity to read the executive summary of, uh, this charter school. Charters should really be founded around the simple notion of innovation, of creating an innovative program that probably doesn't exist in a traditional public school. And hopefully is also meeting a targeted need of a distinct student population, okay? If you read this, uh, application over very, very carefully, um, there really isn't a lot there that's innovative. It speaks about things like having a personalized learning experience for every student, uh, more authentic learning opportunities for each student. It talks about things like flexible grouping, flexible scheduling, and so on. Um, and we're going to be talking about our district action plans within a few minutes. Most of you are veteran members of this committee, you know that these are things that have been initiatives and ideas within our educational programming for years. I can say in my eight-plus years, they've been at the forefront. I know I speak for my colleagues in the other affected districts, knowing that, um, those are also their strategic priorities as well. So I think that is a real, real key piece. As I say in my background notes, myself and, uh, my other colleagues from the affected districts, we do have a meeting, uh, in Malden with the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, on the 26th of this month. Uh, where we are going to express our, uh, concerns and our objections to this proposal. So, uh, keep in mind, I think I also put in the background, um, the timeline as far as the review process. Right now, we are in a place where the Commissioner, by the end of this month, needs to make a recommendation whether this proposal for this Leading Edge Charter School will go forward for a final application. And that final application deadline is October 16th, and if they are invited to apply and it is submitted, then the game plan would be, public hearings would be in the city of Milford, uh, during the month of November. So if that's the case, I will continue to keep you apprised. Um, I think it's important to have, um, a unified voice with regard to, uh, superintendent's, school committees, also the teachers' association, and to be prepared to, uh, make a statement, uh, in opposition to this proposal. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, or if you have any commentary with regard to what I provided to you.
Well, uh, my, my question is, where is this proposal coming from in terms of not only who is proposing it, who is proposing it, but what is the proposed need that they must have an additional choice for schools within the Milford area?
So if you, uh, even peruse the executive summary, the, um, rationale behind it was the personalized learning environment, and the proposal cites that, uh, the average class size would be 15 students. And I believe the actual verbiage that's used in the proposal is to address the overcrowded schools in our region. Well, again, correct me if I'm wrong, I think 10 minutes ago, I just showed you our average class sizes and so on. Uh, there's a couple places I'd like to see things smaller, but quite frankly, I don't think any of our classrooms are overcrowded. And I know that our staff does an exemplary job and is continuously trying to push the envelope with personalizing and individualizing education for our kids. So, uh, the first part of your question is, um, where did the proposal came out of? Ironically enough, it does come out of Milford, it comes from an individual who works as an administrator in the Milford Public Schools.
So, I mean, just my opinion on this is that, um, taking resources away from the public schools within this, within this area, I think is very wrong. Especially since they're putting additional burdens on us for all transportation costs and especially special education transportation costs. The state isn't fulfilling their commitment to, to provide us with a regional school budget as they said, and now they're coming up with an additional burden on us.
Well, it's a, it's a very, very problematic funding mechanism, problematic funding formula, and you know, again, to go back to this slide that I just showed you. Again, we're not, um, I could show you another slide, um, that also gives you. If you're Bellingham, and next door to you, you've got Franklin, and realize Bellingham is smaller than us as far as size, that 108 students is a large head. Okay, so you can see relative to everybody else, um, charter schools aren't a major factor as far as, um, you know, even Blackstone, Millville, you know, still with 35 kids. So, um, it is a very, very challenging, um, mechanism, and unfortunately, it puts forward, um, a competition, a clear competition of resources, as you said.
I mean, are they trying to, are they trying to address a deficiency within the Milford School District? Is that their purpose?
I, I, I haven't had any conversation, I, you know, I pretty much know what you know as far as reading the proposal. I think probably yes, Milford would be seeing that it's going to be situated there of all the encatchment districts, it is the largest district that has some of the largest needs. So one would assume that the preponderance of students would be coming from the city of Milford, but again, there's absolutely no guarantee of that simple fact. And again, that's why that second slide, I did any type of range from 10 to 50 students.
Well, it seems to me we should oppose this with all possible force.
So again, uh, we're still very early in the process, I will, uh, provide an update of, uh, the meeting with the Commissioner, with my colleagues. And, uh, we will definitively know by the end of this calendar month whether they've even been invited to submit a formal application.
And then from there, um, have they, they haven't selected a location per se in Milford?
Uh, according to the proposal, no.
How much does the local government in Milford have, you know, how much oversight do they have over?
Um, I'm not exactly sure, I would imagine there has to be some type of zoning process and also school siting process. Okay, and then last but not least, uh, something that we are absolutely, uh, delighted to recognize today, tonight I should say, is the incredible work that has gone on with regard to We Care Misco, okay? And as I say in the background notes, from literally almost the last day of, uh, or the first day of vacation in June, to, uh, I'm going right here and now. Uh, a grand total of over 125 volunteers, parent volunteers, student volunteers, community members have given over 750 hours to, uh, the beautification projects, uh, at Misco. And a lot of it has been around just a lot of sweat labor as far as painting, uh, putting in a unified theme with regard to our wings and so on. Um, a complete redoing of the locker rooms, and we've had parents actually build in these beautiful wooden lockers in both our boys' and girls' room, a spruce-up teacher's lounge, and so on. Um, so as you can see, uh, a lot of work went into the summer, um, some of the fruits of the labor, as you can see from those pictures right there. And, um, I don't mean to speak for the faculty, but I feel very comfortable speaking for the faculty and saying, there is a ton of gratitude for, uh, the work that has been done. This is just actually a shot from last week with the staff with their We Care, uh, Misco t-shirts. So I think you guys know, uh, the initial brains behind the operation, Diane Duncan, but she's here tonight also with the parent extraordinaire Lisa Liu to talk a little bit about the work that's been done, and also some of the future fundraising ideas.
Thank you, come on up.
You get one of the big chairs, Lisa. Absolutely.
We get new chairs just for you.
I, I, no, I actually kind of see this as I left and you got new chairs. So we're super excited tonight to tell you a little bit more about We Care Misco, which didn't actually start off as We Care Misco, it's kind of been an evolution. Just to give you a little bit of background, this all began probably four years ago with the first survey that went out, the K through 12 insight survey. When we really, in a very in-depth way, asked our students, our staff, and our parents, what do you think of whatever school you're at, the education, homework, a little bit of everything across the board. Um, and for me, as a school committee member, I was astounded, um, by the, the comments that students were saying about this school in particular, Misco, and the conditions of it, and parents. Additionally, standing on the sides of baseball fields and listening to parents talk about the grounds and the inside, and as a parent myself, walking through the school for scouts and all the different reasons why you're at Misco. Um, and so, I really believe that when you ask people their opinions and they tell you your opinions, you should do something about it. And so this has always kind of been in the back of my head, even when I was sitting on the other side of the table. Um, and so we kind of just, I've, I had all of this swirling around, and, um, when Jen came on board, um, two years ago, I sat down with her, I introduced myself. And I sat down with her in her office, and I said, so, like, I really feel like your environment matters, like, that's kind of the premise of all of this, your environment matters. Where you go to school every day, where you go to work every day makes a difference. And certainly, Misco is the oldest school in the district at 60 years, um, and a lot of time, the school budget, particularly under the facilities line item, is directed towards infrastructure. So the boiler, the septic, the well, the big things. And in the back of my mind, sitting here, I kept saying, none of this is ever going to get addressed, and this is exactly what we're going to be giving our students and our staff infinitely. So, I was trying to think of a way that we could maybe infuse some positivity in the environment in terms of enhancements, um, in function and aesthetics in the environment. But truth be told, Jen, when I sat down with you. But truth be told, Jen, when I sat down with you two and a half years ago, I had no idea exactly what this was going to look like. I just knew we needed to do something. And Jen said, "Whoa, I love it, great, like, this could all be really good, but I just became principal here, and I have people to meet and learn the climate and the environment and systems, and come see me in a year." So I did. I don't know if I came into your office or you invited me in, but I came in.
We probably met in the lobby.
Yeah.
Together.
So then that's how this whole project really started, and I would be remiss if I didn't say upfront that none of this would have ever happened if it wasn't for Jen Mannion, Paul Marshall, Facilities, Jay Byer, Ken Shuangye, because this has truly been a collaboration. You can't come into somebody's space, even though we did, you can't really come into anybody's space without learning the space first. So we did walkthroughs with Jay, multiple walkthroughs with Ken and Ryan Janrow and some of the other facilities crew to really learn how the space was used. We're still kind of learning that, too. And where we could identify things that we can improve on a limited budget, because we hadn't even started our fundraising. And so we just were trying to figure it all out, like, what impact could we have there should we start? So to try to be as brief as possible, we sent out a survey to the district with the help of Dr. M, basically asking parents, "Hey, do you have any special sets of skills that we could maybe utilize for this kind of beautification effort? And would people be willing to donate to this?" And we got a really good response, I felt, and we identified carpenters, electricians, plumbers, interior designers, painters. We got a little smorgasbord of different types of skill sets that we could tap into. So we started hosting meetings, we started to kind of get, kind of dig our heels in a little bit more and figure out what kind of work we wanted to start with. But we're quickly realizing that a lot of this work would require more fundraising, which is when I bumped into Lisa Liu on a baseball field back in the spring and shared my ideas with her and began our partnership, and I'm sorry. So now she's sick of me and doesn't want to spend any more time with me. But anyways, it's a great partnership because she is an amazing fundraiser. We've got plenty of fundraisers in place, but truth be told, and I shared this statistic at the staff meeting, which Jen invited us to partake in at the very beginning of the year, the day before school started, the three projects that we tackled, I should tell you first, were doors, which you saw in some of Dr. M's pictures, trying to paint as many doors as possible. Our initial goal was the whole building, that might have been a little lofty, we might have gotten it over our heads. Then flipping the teacher's space, because it really needed to be flipped, and we felt like our teachers deserved way better than what was currently in the teacher's lounge. And then the third one was the locker rooms, as Dr. M. So a lot of this was going to probably take some fundraising. But the statistic that I shared at the teachers' meeting, I asked the staff, like, how much it costs to flip the teacher's lounge? We had a lot of different answers, but the truth of the matter is, it was one very small trip to IKEA, that was probably less than $100, and the rest was all donated, and the rest was all sweat equity. So I'll name a few. Lowe's donated the countertop, the sink, the faucet. We had Michelle Brubin and Stacy Oliva, who are both interior designers, come in and redesign the space, give us colors, and really kind of help us, like, figure things out flow-wise. We were trying to create a soft, comfortable area for the teachers and just make it a more prideful space. And I really think that we were able to accomplish that on less than $100, which is pretty impressive. So sometimes it's just about thinking differently, and another great example of, like, thinking about things differently is, there are signs right outside all of the doors at Misco, and they used to be a very faded pink, and on top the very faded pink, the lettering was a very faded white. So if you were walking through the halls of Misco, you'd have to really get up close to see the number and certainly to see the staff names. So what they did was they put on the doors the staff names. But then when we were kind of evaluating the environment, we looked at that and we were like, "Well, how can we make these better?" And then we were like, "Well, we can't really make them better, we should just go buy nuance for the whole school." Then we determined what the cost of that was, and we were like, "Oh, we're not doing that." So Deana Novo, a parent in the district, took the signs home, he was a science home, and she's like, "Let me figure it out, let me work with it." So she took them all home, she tried different methods. At the end of the day, she ended up coming up with this one method that cost us less than $30 to do all of the signs in the blue hallway and the red hallway. And they look, I think that is what has made...
They look fabulous.
They look, it's just like, and all it was, was a little brainstorming, a little solution-seeking, and trying to be a little creative about our solutions. And her husband, Mike Novo, headed up the door painting effort, which was a gargantuan effort, to say the least. There were times during the summer I wanted to cry. Yes. But, but the difference that it has made is remarkable, and I think the students entered the school and the staff entered the school saying, "Wait a minute, something's different here." And so all of these efforts that we undertook during the summer was for impact, you know, high visibility, we wanted people to see that change was indeed in the air and that things are going to, are going to be improving. But that is by no means, by no means the entire scope of the work that We Care Misco is doing. I should also add that we are part of Misco Hill PTO, so we are a subcommittee under Misco Hill PTO. And part of that pairing and partnership came from, this isn't a one-and-done. This is something that is going to remain, so that we're always kind of looking at our school with a critical eye, and just our, I don't even want to say our school, but our building, because it encompasses everyone, inside and outside on the grounds as well. So always looking at the school with a critical eye and owning it, and saying, "Well, what can we do to improve it?" And We Care is about providing the resources so that you can care about your school, and we'll care with you, and together we can make some projects happen. So that's kind of where We Care came from. We switched from Misco beautification because this was so much more than beautification for me personally. Our mission statement is, okay, let's see if I can remember it, "To empower students and staff to make improvements in their environment, both aesthetic and functional, to improve pride, ownership, and student success." So that is our mission statement that we're kind of focusing in on, and at the heart of this really is owning your environment, making it prideful, and at the end of the day, your environment matters, and it's setting us all up for success. So, sorry, that was probably a long-winded version, but that's kind of the gist of We Care Misco moving forward. Say it again.
The grant.
Yeah, so moving forward, our work in the school will not be the type of projects that we tackled during the summer. They will be more student and teacher project-based projects. We started a We Care grant program in which we'll have two types of grants, we'll have classroom grants and kind of common area grants, so anywhere else in the school and outside on the grounds of the school, where students can pair with their teachers or pair with other students and have an adult leader and propose improvements in the environment to Lisa, myself, Jen, and Paul. And whatever we can fund, that's a great idea, that's going to add pride and ownership to the environment, we will fund, we're going to do our best. And that's where Lisa comes in. Go ahead, you can tell us about some of our fundraisers.
Well, one of our fundraisers is these amazing shirts here, "The teachers almost bought us out of stock." And it was, we had it...
It was awesome.
Yeah, it was awesome. We hadn't planned on selling them that day. It was just kind of a, an afterthought, like, maybe we should bring in the t-shirts and offer them to the teachers, see if they have any interest in buying them. We had planned to sell them at Mendon Fest.
Okay. So much for that.
Yeah. So this is, we just went and picked up more t-shirts today, so we can...
Wonderful.
And our logo, again, more of kind of the volunteerism and people working together, our logo, front and back, was made by another parent in the district, Kate Flann, again, who has her own graphic design business. We have dealt with so many professionals in the environment, Amy Magzoo, Mark Wisato, Jeremy Stewart, like, all these people who have just donated their time to these, to these amazing projects. The two, so when you read that statistic, Dr. M, about 125 volunteers, 750 manpower hours, it's probably well more than that. That was just doors. Our two carpenters that built some beautiful locker units, I know that they each probably spent at least 30 hours, if not more. Jen and Paul have come into the building and done work, teachers have come into the building and done work, like, across the board. It's been a really nice community effort, and we're hoping that continues and that that will grow even to greater heights, so we can just keep getting some really good work done.
Absolutely.
And do you want to touch base a little bit more on your fundraisers, particularly your flocking fundraiser?
Yeah, so we have a flamingo flocking going on right now, where you can flock a friend, a neighbor, a teacher, for, I believe it's $25. You can also, if you don't want to get flocked, you can buy no flocking insurance.
It's a flamingo.
Yes. Besides that, we also, we also have a shoe drive going on right now, and the shoe drive is, just started actually tomorrow, but our, our box, our collection bin here at Misco is almost full already.
We've been trying to communicate that.
Yes, yes. So that's going to go on through mid-November, and we get actually 40 cents per pound of shoes, so...
So it could be a good fundraiser.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So our goal is to collect 100 bags of shoes, 25 pairs of shoes in a bag. So, yeah. Yeah, so, and we actually have another fundraiser that's going to happen come June, which is a battle of the bands, kind of playing on the whole Aerosmith play here. You know, "Do you think you could be the next Aerosmith?" So...
Super.
Yeah. Couple of other things I'd just like to add, just to kind of give credit where credit is due, is back in the spring, the late spring, we had a sixth grade, fifth and sixth grade Upton Girl Scouts team, who created that fantastic, if anybody gets a chance to go into the cafeteria...
It's right behind you.
So that really kind of got us rolling, and then we had another group of Girl Scouts that went into the seventh grade bathrooms and just transformed them. We also had Casey Rhodes and Heather McCord doing the eighth grade bathrooms. And really just like slowly but surely, everything is just becoming more prideful. And Jen and I continue to have conversations about, like, ownership of space so that we can start, I mean, a big part of this for me is starting to get student artwork back in the schools as well, and gracing the halls with, you know, that these talented kids have so much to offer. So trying to really, you know, build that back up again. And I don't know, it's just been, it's, the work is not done. I think that's the biggest thing that I want to say, like, this is, again, not a one-and-done, this is going to be ongoing work. Most of the work that happens during the school year will be driven by students and staff, but we still have some outstanding projects going on, like, we have a little lobby flip that's going on. Lori Holloway, who is an eighth grade teacher here, is leading a landscaping project that is really designed to get our students involved. I have another project going on with, I'm hoping to work with the coaches and the A.D. on our students and coaches all working together to finish off our locker rooms, because they're still not done, even though they have new lockers. There's still a lot of work to be done. So this is not over, and we still need help, we need a lot of help. So if people are listening at home, you know, there's so many people who came up to me and said, "Oh, Diane, I'm so sorry, I couldn't make it there this summer, I was so busy." And I get that, like, 100% I understood, but what I told everyone is, "Don't worry. Don't you worry, there's more opportunities." So thank you for giving us an opportunity to talk about it tonight, because I think it is really, has the power to, to transform how an education feels at Misco.
Well, the really powerful thing for me is the way that we follow the community, and that's, thank you for that, because getting an email coming up for me and saying, "You have an opportunity to volunteer," I think everybody in the community should get emails like that.
And we did, we had a lot of, we had a lot of students who had surface work that they needed to complete over the summer for National Honor Society. So we had students from BDT and from NIPMOP working with us this summer. And moving forward, we're partnering with Chris Evans over at NIPMOP to keep involving the high school students with the middle, middle grade students in performing some of this work and finishing some of this work. And sometimes even before that, because we imagine that some of our kids will need some help with brainstorming solutions, you know? The grant program is, is all about that, finding something that's inadequate, doesn't work, not prideful in the environment, and fixing it. And sometimes they're going to need some older students to do that, so we're hoping to partner them.
Well, anytime we can get the community to engage more in the schools, I think it's positive for everyone.
Yeah, so it's been great, and again, it's really a nice opportunity to be able to tell the public about what's going on, because not everybody's been into the school. The students have been into the school, the staff has seen the differences. We're really excited to show our staff how much we care about them and that, how important their role is, and their environment matters. It's important for everybody.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, it's just...
So thank you to all who are involved, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have a couple of, a couple of votes to take. One is on the recertification of the Mersey fiscal year 2020 budget. Do we have any setup for that?
Just, just as a background, and this is very, very typical, because realize, when you certify the budget in March, we are still using the governor's House One budget numbers. And then we are also had that initial certification back in March, if you recall, was for a level services budget. And then in our conversations with both of our communities, recall, we ended up going with something that was less than that, which required the reductions that were made in June. So what this recertification and all of these motions represent, it represents the finalized FY 2020 budget of $36,404,931. So this is very typical for September. I think I put in the background notes where some of the additions and specific reductions were, but keep in mind, as is also typical, this does not mean any change in the assessments to either of our two communities.
So in order to go about this, we've got to read out all of the motions.
Correct.
Can you read out all the motions?
Do you want to do it?
You want to do it?
Yeah, she's good. Second.
Perfect.
Okay, motion one, to set the operational budget for the Mendon-Upton Regional School for 2019-20 fiscal year, $36,414,931, that consists of general operations within the levy limit of $35,556,246, and debt service outside the levy limit of $858,689.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye. I'd like to make the second motion to assess the town of Mendon, $10,091,574, that consists of the following: minimum local contribution is $7,234,022, non-discriminatory discretionary charges of $739,392, discretionary charges of $1,702,387, long-term debt, Clough Memorial School, $347,104, and long-term debt, Misco Green Repair, $68,669.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And the third motion to assess the town of Upton, $12,162,029, that consists of the following: minimum local contribution, $8,654,881, non-discrimination charges, $928,535, discretionary charges of $21,37,701, long-term debt, Clough Memorial School, $356,096, and long-term debt, Misco Green Repair, $86,869.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion four, to appropriate thirteen million, five hundred and six, six hundred and seventy-eight from the state aid that consists of the following: chapter seventy funds, twelve million, four hundred and forty-eight, seven hundred and fifty-six. Regional transportation reimbursement, one million, one hundred and forty-five, eight hundred and forty-eight. And chapter, school tuition reimbursement, fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-two.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
And motion five, to appropriate five hundred and fifty thousand for the following school district sources: access and deficiency, three hundred thousand. Vision, spend tuition, seventy-five thousand. Transfer in the form of revolving accounts, hundred fifty thousand. And Medicaid reimbursement, twenty-five thousand.
All, any discussion? All those in favor? So all the motions passed unanimously. So the second vote we have to take here is for the 2019-2020 district action plans. Any setup for that?
Yeah, sure. I'll talk. So you have in your, you should have in your packet some draft action plans for this current fiscal year. What I'd like to do in a very concise fashion is just kind of go over what the four overarching goals are and kind of give a flavor of what some of the key action steps are. So as you know, based upon our still relatively new strategic plan, INSPIRE, we have four overarching strategic objectives, or four big rocks, as I like to refer to them, that really all of our goal setting falls under these four categories around engaging the community, our families, community members as partners in learning, supporting social emotional learning, so our schools remain safe, healthy and balanced learning environments. Really redefining school, and I think this is the piece around innovation, and what are we doing to change our schools so we're preparing our learners for a modern context? And then also aligning our professional practices with our very well-stated beliefs about learning. So for this school year, our district leadership team, as we typically do, really brainstormed a lot during the summer months around what is reasonable, what is ambitious, but also manageable. If you recall last school year, we have a district action plans that I think, not that I'm counting, but that are all of twenty-one pages, and really broke things down by just strategic initiatives. And I think there was a lot of zeal there coming off a brand-new strategic plan, but it could have been a little bit overly ambitious, in my humble opinion. But these goals that I'm about to talk about are really prioritized based upon really what are our critical needs and what's the objective we're doing anyway. And as is typical, the mindset is that these are steps that'll give us leverage in progressing towards our district's mission and vision and achieving each. So the first goal, and I always refer to this as the perpetual goal, something that we should always be striving for, and that's enhancing communication and engagement and outreach to our families and the larger community. So if you go through that first goal set, you'll see some of our action steps. I talked a little bit earlier this evening about our transition and our upgrade of our website and our mass communication system to Aptige and our student information system, Power School. We talked the last meeting about really the key to retool how we're doing budget subcommittee meetings to kind of make them a lot more informational in nature and to engage a larger audience. And we're going to talk about that a little bit more in just a few minutes. And then also, very similar to what the town of Upton did through the budget process last year, is the mindset of producing a series of short informational videos on what are our key district priorities. For example, the whole Portrait of a Learner initiative. What does that mean and what's important? So getting those videos out on YouTube and also sharing them vis-à-vis social media is also an action plan step. We've also brainstormed about specific strategies to engage community members that don't have kids in our school, thinking about having evenings where, say, some of our concerts are completely free of charge and we actually advertise it, or some of our athletic contests, and really making that a priority. And then also there is a vision to, and I think it's in another step, we've, over the last, I want to say at least four or five years, have been doing Inspired Learning Conventions strictly at NIPMOK. I know we piloted something in parallel at Clough Elementary last year. If you recall, I believe it was in the beginning of June, we did something called Clough Kid Connections, which was kind of the same concept. The vision is to do that district-wide in all four schools, that type of really engaged learning day for kids. Our second goal, again, this shouldn't be a surprise, is to further what we're doing with regard to social emotional learning. But we're being very intentional in saying that it's not about just kids, it's about staff alike. And really the notion of educator self-care, and specifically resilience, and how that falls in line with self-care are some of our key action steps. So for the third consecutive year, we will continue as one of the districts that is involved in excellence in social emotional learning, or EXCEL Network. And this year, the emphasis is on specific classroom practices that kind of get a part of enhancing SCL. As you know, last year, we started with a positive behaviors and interventions and support program at both Clough and Memorial. So the vision is to further refine that, but also to get a PBIS program up and running here at Misco. There's also some plans about doing a district-wide book study, again, on self-care and resilience, which we've started in earnest. Something that I think is fascinating that just our small district-wide SCL team has done to date, but to really do more of a deep dive at the school, at the school level on what are some of the existing SCL practices and structures that are in place, with the mindset of getting more of our staff to think about, gee, how could that look in my classroom? And what does that actually look like in practice? And then expanding our professional development opportunities in SCL, in leading SCL implementation. Through some of the work that Maureen has done, we are looking at for members of our leadership team to participate in various networks and also a early learning series that Desi is putting forward that's focused not only on SCL, but also trauma-informed practices. And then, as we do every other year, and some of our policies and programs have come out of the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey results, which is administered every two years. We just, over the summer months, receive the latest round of results. That's informed some of our proactive programming. And particularly, if you recall last winter and spring, some of the programming that we've had in place against vaping, which is an enormous issue. And then last but not least, a process known as relationship mapping, where at the building level, and it could be done on a grade level, it could be done on a team, it could be done on a whole school, an exercise to ascertain how well are we ensuring that every single child in the building is very, very well-known by at least one or more adults in the building. So something that we're also going to explore this year. The third goal, and I know we've talked about this a little bit in the past, but redefining, up until this point, we've referred to it as the MURSD Portrait of a Graduate. And I think as we've talked about in the past, there's too much of a connotation with Portrait of a Graduate, that this is something that's strictly owned at the high school level. Therefore, we're being very deliberate about redefining that as Portrait of a Learner and being very explicit that this is about competencies or learning goals that are pre-K through twelve across the board. And how are they guiding our programs, our professional practices and our curriculum? So some of the key action steps would be creating a brand-new MURSD Portrait of a Learner website that kind of does a deep dive into each of the six competencies. And also really the work that we saw of John and Mary Ann and the high school staff and what they've done with the whole Portrait of a Learner Scholar Program would also be folded into that. Also, again, putting very, very clear visual reminders in all four of our schools, literally on walls, of what the Portrait of a Learner, what each of the six competencies are. Being very explicit in district publications, things like our program of studies here at Misco and also at the high school, and embedding those competencies within them. I know some work has been done at the high school to date, but we're looking to expand upon that and also bring it to our other three schools as far as having some type of reflective tool, probably in the form of a rubric, where students could reflect upon their work in the context of the sixth POL competencies. And as I said before, doing district-wide Inspired Learning Days simultaneously in all four schools. Something that we're really excited about, and John Clements was really instrumental in writing a grant to MUFE that was funded last spring, is doing a district-wide learning adventure, something that would be framed around a learning experience within the community that also envelops those six Portrait of a Learner competencies. And it would be multi-age, so literally a pilot group of about twenty to twenty-five kids across the grade span, elementary, middle and high. And then, as we talked about during the last meeting, pursuing membership in this kaleidoscope project that the DESI is looking to pilot to really push our practices with regard to performance-based assessment. And then last but not least, goal four, which envelops our strategic objectives and also several initiatives, but it is a little more drilled down to specifically talking about student support services. And I know that that was a major thrust of our last meeting in talking about the Futures Report, but using structures and practices to improve student support services so we can more effectively meet the needs of all diverse learners. So first and foremost, in taking a look at some of the most salient recommendations of the Futures Report, particularly with regard to case management of out-of-district placements and some of our staffing patterns and some of the issues around supervision and evaluation that were detailed in the report. It's coming up with a concrete game plan to implement those recommendations. Secondly, formalizing specific roles and responsibility for hiring, supervision and evaluation, and scheduling of all special education staff. We have found that some disparities do exist from building to building in various areas. So literally drilling this down through an organizational chart and detailing administrative rules and responsibility at both central office and the building level are the key vision behind that step. Planning and implementing additional professional development opportunities for all paraeducators. I think you heard that very loud and clear in the Futures Report that was given. That's something that we believe is also a critical need. And then developing a shared definition of specially-designed instruction, which is the definition of the type of instruction that students on IEP should be getting, and a catalog of specific specialized, specially-designed instruction strategies that should be used in a co-taught setting, being very explicit about it. Ensuring that there is a consistent, high-functioning RTI, or Response to Intervention Process, in all four schools. Again, all four schools do have a response to intervention process. But with that said, it's not necessarily consistent. It's not necessarily consistent in how data is used to monitor student progress or to implement specific research-based interventions for kids who are struggling. So with that said, the next piece around ensuring that there are professional development opportunities in doing those pieces is critical. And then last but not least, I know we've talked, and I think this is right when you came on board, we took a look at some of the data around inclusion and student performance, but also kind of going the next step and doing an analysis of the impact of co-teaching using multiple measures of student performance is also key. So those are some of the key action steps for that last goal and all four of them. As is usual, the next steps after hopefully your approval this evening is our building principals generally use the foundation of these four goals in these district action plans and crafting their individual school improvement plans. I think it's key also, as we do every year, is charting out how do these goals and these initiatives fall into the larger scheme of the full strategic plan? And then also developing a timetable at mid-year and then at the end of the year to report out publicly at this level of how we've progressed in this. So that's a quick slush through that.
So this is the parent-down version?
It really is. I think, you know, I think a lot of these specific plans are ambitious, but they're also manageable.
So as you were talking about, I really love the point that you brought up around the reflective tool for students to measure their progress with Portrait of a Learner. So being the parent of a child who's looking for a college, there is, I'm getting a lot of feedback from colleges right now about their inability to see each individual high school and what it has to offer compared to the rest. And they kind of leave it up to a blanket term. "We want to see that you've utilized all the resources of your high school." That's what they usually say. And in many cases, they don't look very deep within what those resources are within each high school. They just see, you know, the typical high school profile.
Typical transcript, typical set of experiences.
So they don't, and I know there is concern from my daughter, "Well, do they really know that I can't take, you know, sixteen APs? It's impossible to take within the high school?" So there's a lot of concern as to whether we're really projecting ourselves out there and what we can do as a district and the unique aspects of what we do.
And if you recall, when John and Mary Ann were here in June and they presented the whole Portrait of a Learner Scholar Program, and if my memory serves me correctly, I think there were thirty-three or thirty-four students of NIPMOK, grades nine through twelve, that had their own section of the webpage and their own profile and so on. The overwhelming majority of their experiences that really spoke to the Portrait of a Learner competencies weren't necessarily in traditional high school experiences. They weren't in the AP classes. A lot of times, it was about artwork that they presented, or it was about their passion for music. Or if you recall, I think one example was a student that she was amazing in equestrian arts and so on. So I think the vision is, again, in making those connections with the community and looking outside of the four walls of NIPMOK for learning opportunities to make these connections.
I totally agree. And I think also, if you look at it broadly, and I visited a very small subset of colleges and seen their presentations, they're dying for more information about the individual experiences and how they're connected within their own realm of who they are, what they're trying to do, with their own competencies. what they're trying to do, with their own competencies.
Absolutely.
So I just, I really think this is a great thing to start telling people about, especially, you know, the colleges and wherever our children go. I think this is a fantastic way to develop them as human beings. So I just, I love that aspect of this plan.
Agreed.
All right. So any further discussion? I guess we'll vote on the action plans. So can I get a motion to approve the district action plans for 2019-2020?
I move that we approve the MRSD 2019-2020 district action plans.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay. Let me just switch over to the agenda again. Okay. So next is the old business. We have an update to the schedule for the budget subcommittee meeting for the coming year.
Yeah, so just a really quick update. There were a couple of scheduling conflicts. So what you have before you is just a slightly updated committee, budget subcommittee meeting schedule. There was only one date change. It was, originally there was a meeting scheduled on Tuesday, January 28. It's just been switched to Wednesday, the 29th for the simpler reason that January 28th is the date of the NIPMUC showcase. So we just moved it one day. But other than that, it's straightforward. Our intent is to get this out to all stakeholders ASAP.
Good. Excellent. I don't recall, did that make the paper as well? Did that list make the paper?
I believe it did.
So it won't change?
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Next on the agenda, any correspondence?
We have none.
Okay. Other matters not anticipated about the committee within 48 hours of the posted meeting? No? Okay. Future agenda items. On September 23rd, we're going to consider approval of the 2019-2020 school improvement plans. And the superintendent's annual evaluation is on October 7th. And with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. So...
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourn.